These, I do it in terms of classrooms can power 201 classrooms for the full 12-hour day and 145 homes each day during the summer. And these are all great jobs that can't be exported. The clean renewable jobs, including wind and hydro are, what, 110,000 estimated for new jobs for 2018 and 3.6 million total jobs, jobs that can't be exported, jobs that, in California with our new senate and bill 350 and Assembly Bill 75, will require all new homes to have new construction, to have solar in 2020. So we're training students not just to be installers, also designers, sales, research and development, humanitarian relief, because as we've seen in Florida, New Orleans, Puerto Rico, the storms can cause terrible damage and then we need backup power, we need grid resilience. So we have a tiny house program. I teach off-grid and backup power, and these are important future skills. So I'd just like to introduce and let each student say just maybe 10 seconds, starting with Alex, who's going to be an interpreter here.
Thank you. My name is Alessandro. And I'm taking a class to learn solar installation, and this is a team of students. So we're looking forward to helping saving energy in the future. And thank you, everyone, and have a nice day.
I'm Lechek. I'm a student at this one school. This is static solar panel PD. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. This is a wonderful day for Earth. This is the way we're going to be in the future. Quiet energy, silent, and it's where everybody, as the sun is.
Hello, my name is Sergio Duñio. I had the opportunity to take the first Econ MT in the winter, and been wanting to take that class, and finally was able to get it in my schedule, and then taking the second class, then to try and learn as much as possible out of the new and upcoming thing. Thank you.
You. I don't want to say anything. It's very shy. How about Jose? Okay. Is he still on? Yeah? Okay.
Hello, my name is Isidoro Miedalas, and I'm here with a class with Mr. Colton. Mr. Colton, I'm sorry, and regarding the solar electric components and PV modules, and I really enjoyed this class. It's very good, and it's really the future of the green for this planet. Thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you so much to our solar students here. Thank you, Adam Colson. I noticed Bruno Galusa. Where'd Bruno go? I just saw who's actually one of the people actually still build this program. He's over there teaching electrical right now. I think I also see Edward van Ginkel right here, head of Jacobs Engineering, our big partner with L A CCD build. So now Albert Salendini, come on up. So you got, he's going to tell us a little bit about some of the electric EV programs we have here on the campus as well. Bring all your students, any students that are here, come and join us.
Albert. Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. I am honored to be here, to be honest with you. This is a very important event, and it reflects our efforts for the college and the district as to take care of our environment in a special day like today, and I think officially was yesterday. Anyway, I teach the class for hybrid and electric vehicle technologies, which is a one-year program, and it takes you and brings you into an interest level to understand these technologies, how they're going to coincide and build themselves into the existing infrastructure that you guys are seeing right here. So with Mr. Adam teaching them about the PV, we can also use that in vehicles like behind me, both of them which are full electric vehicles. Now, one thing about, which is my personal opinion, is we have to stop burning things to get energy. There's no need anymore. In here, we have a couple of my current students for the program. They're going to graduate this come June, and I am honored to say also that there's an alumni working for Blue LA, Mr. Brian over there. He graduated from the program right there. So why don't you guys say a couple of things and introduce yourselves.
Yes, hello. My name is Met Garoy. I'm in my fourth semester L A Trade Tech, and we'd like to thank the Earth, and one thing I'd like to do is improve on the range of the Blue LA and electric vehicles, so maybe we can get to Las Vegas, though, right? Thank you very much.
That's right. My name's Darrell Carey.
This is my fourth semester, and what I like about electric vehicles is their possibilities unlimited, that you can create something that's, that's to sustain the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So thank you very much. So rumor has it that Blue LA might be in line for a successful grant somewhere. I'm not going to say anything I haven't, can't have a right to say, but maybe expansion time for Blue LA, is that what I heard? Anybody? I think we have expansion time coming for Blue LA, which is a great thing in terms of relationship with carb. Also, just so you know, the new culinary building in the center of campus, that is also going to have solar rooftop, right? And then when we do that, we can finally power up the solar on top of Mariposa Hall, right? So we're going to have three buildings with solar here on the campus. This is the first one, two more to go. We have a little bit of music for you. We have downstairs, you know, the Blue LA celebration right there on Grand. We have some, you know, teaching learning environments. Jess, are we going to be doing something downstairs as well or no? So where should they go for that?
Right down there. Down.
So directly downstairs, get off of the first floor, you'll have some of the vehicles right there to kind of show exactly what we're teaching and learning related to our EV programs here and our solar programs. Anything, anything to learn from our solar programs right now? Anybody wants to stick around?
We have the meter that's showing how much electricity the system's making in that corner by 24th Street. A sign is there. Some little displays right here.
Some displays here, but they actually have the meter. You can see how much is powering right now from solar, how fast the solar is actually creating electricity, right on the meter, right at the entrance from 24th Street. So, R. Selley, what are we forgetting? Oh, the ribbon cutting! That's what we're forgetting. Okay, we need the trustees back, please. Come on back.
In LA this week.
We go inside the LAPD's soon-to-be-opened Harbor Division Jail. I'm Gil Reyes with more on how this facility is expected to improve public safety in the South Bay.
I'm Anna Margos. What are hundreds of people doing sitting outside on lounge chairs, on picnic blankets with picnic baskets? Well, it's the Silver Lake Picture Show movie screening series, and that's coming up.
I'm Saidah Pagan at City Hall, and I'll tell you how the Los Angeles City Council is hoping to address the problem of gender pay inequity in the world of sports. I'll have that story coming right up.
I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening on LA this week. After years sitting idly, an LAPD jail will soon open with the necessary staff to operate it. Gil Reyes takes us inside and explains how patrols in the Harbor area could be impacted.
Nearly 10 years after its construction, the LAPD's Harbor Division Jail in San Pedro is preparing for its long overdue opening.
As a matter of fact, yesterday, we had folks from General Services, Plumbing, Electrical, our ITA department. They know that the cameras need to be updated. They know the security system as far as the mechanism that opens and closes all the doors needs to be upgraded.
Sergeant Catherine Plous gives us a tour and the backstory. The jail was completed in 2010, but at the time did not receive the necessary funding to staff it. Councilman Joe Buscaino was senior lead officer at the time.
For the, one of the mere purpose to run for office was because of the mismanagement of the city in this specific jail facility. How in the heck are you going to build a beautiful, state-of-the-art, green jail facility without having the budget for detention officers?
Without jail staff, the jail has remained closed. Harbor area officers have no choice but to drive 20 miles north to book arrestees at the nearest jail, wasting time and resources.
Every time an officer is taken out of the field, we're not responding to the calls for service here in the Harbor City, Harbor Gateway, Wilmington, the San Pedro communities. So again, we were doing a disservice by not having this resource available to us, and that's going to change now.
Buscaino successfully lobbied for the needed staffing and upgrades to finally open the jail as part of the mayor's new budget. Our tour continues.
A custody assistant would be able to control all the doors within this entire facility. As you can see now, all the equipment is not working. It needs to be replaced. We're actually in a part of Harbor Division that, while it looks like the jail facility, it's not. It's actually the holding section. This is where they would do a breathalyzer test if it was a DUI suspect, and then they would be placed in one of these cells temporarily and then transported to 77th Division.
But not for long. The soon-to-be-opened jail is conveniently connected to the Harbor Division Police Station.
If you look right behind you, that door right there is the actual door to the jail. So as opposed to driving up to 77th, all they would have to do is walk through that door, drop them off, book them, come back out, and be done.
I'm actually in one of the cells right now. Room for a mattress right over here, sink and toilet right over there. The jail will have enough room to house approximately 300 people when it opens in early 2020.
I'm really proud of the fact that we led that with the community, with the Community Police Advisory Board under the direction of Mona Sutton, the captain here, Captain McManus at LAPD Harbor Division, Sergeant Plous, our community relations officer in charge. It was a collective effort to demand that we have public safety resources here in the Harbor area.
The cost of staffing and upgrades to the soon-to-be-opened jail was nearly $2 million. All of it approved in the mayor's budget. Ever since the United States Women's National Soccer Team won the World Cup championship, there's been a lot of talk about gender pay inequity. Now, the Los Angeles City Council is leading the nation by trying to do something to level the playing field. Saidah Pagan has the story.
Equal pay! Equal pay! Equal pay!
It's simple. Equal pay for equal work.
David Rue is among several Los Angeles City Council members who are trying to outlaw gender pay inequity in professional sports competitions in the city.
It is especially embarrassing that even in this day and age that this exists.
A motion introduced by Council President Herb Wesson and co-presented by Council Members Nuri Martinez and Monica Rodriguez would ensure equal pay and prize money for professional competitions that require a city permit and feature both men's and women's divisions.
Equal pay! Equal pay! Equal pay!
Gender pay inequity has been part of the national conversation since the United States Women's National Soccer Team won a historic fourth World Cup championship. Despite their victory, the women are reportedly paid less than their male counterparts. The women's team has filed a lawsuit alleging pay discrimination.
The city of Los Angeles regularly hosts high-profile sporting events, so if gender pay inequity is outlawed here, it could have a major impact.
L.A. city officials say their motion shows the world their commitment to equality.
With, with Los Angeles seeking to get the next World Cup here in the city of Los Angeles, and the fact that the World Olympics will be here in 2028, it is crucial that the city of Los Angeles fight for equal pay for equal work.
Council Member Rue has also introduced a resolution supporting a separate U.S. senate bill. That bill would prohibit the use of federal funds for the 2026 World Cup games unless the Soccer Federation provides equal pay to female players. Many Angelinos approve of the city's efforts.
I think that is a great precedent to send, to set up for people coming up in the world, and to sort of show her that everybody is equal, no matter what you are, men, women, color, race, religion, whatever, that you're the same. And I think that is a fantastic move, and I'm really proud of my city.
My opinion is that especially in the case where they're administered by the same body, there'd be very little ethical justification for paying them differently based on their gender.
The next step now is for the motion and resolution to be considered by a select group of city council committees. Several sports organizations already have rules in place that split prize money in an equitable and fair manner. She's a legendary labor leader and an activist for farmworkers and women's rights. Dolores Huerta was the special guest at a recent conversation with L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuer. Hundreds packed City Hall to hear what she had to say.
Dolores Huerta is a legend.
Does everything from the bottom of her heart.
She has been a leader in social justice, a leader in civil rights.
We're unstoppable. You know, our power is, is just so great.
I think that we measure our accomplishments by how many people are affected by what we do, and I've just been very blessed to work on really big, major issues.
We still have to be proactive. We have to get out in our communities. We have to remind everyone to get involved civically and to engage civically and to donate their time.
We can make things happen. We can make changes, but it also means that all of us together can make it happen. So it's an individual chance, but also a collective chance.
I want people to leave today inspired, not merely about Dolores Huerta's accomplishments, not at all. I want them to be inspired about what they can do.
If the work that you do, if it can help other people, then every second is worth it. Si se puede, especially in Los Angeles. Si se puede.
It is the first designation of its kind in Los Angeles. The famed Hollyhock House has been named a UNESCO World Heritage Site. There are a total of 878 World Heritage Sites, and 20 of them are in the U.S., and now LA joins that list.
Frank Lloyd Wright's Hollyhock House becomes the only cultural treasures designation in the state of California.
It took time. It took patience, but we all made it happen.
We are standing on the great lawn of Hollyhock House, which is located in the heart of Hollywood at Barnsdall Art Park, and we're here to celebrate the UNESCO designation of this iconic Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece.
The depth and breadth of any society is reflected in its arts and culture, and at a time when the city was, in a sense, looking at the fiscal cliff, this city doubled down on culture.
Having that UNESCO in premature means that everybody now will want to see it, and we can't wait to welcome them here.
Many people don't realize that this all sits inside of a public park. Griffith Park is just literally across the street, and you could really have a great day coming here and then going with your family up into the Griffith Park, or just staying here in the park and enjoying the wonders and beauty of this existing park.
Next week, we take a closer look at Hollyhock House and what the designation means for the city of LA. Stay tuned. A new effort to keep e-scooter riders off the sidewalk gets underway. A community cleanup brings neighbors together, and city council members push to reduce gun violence. All this in City B. L.A. City Council President Herb Wesson and Council Member Greg Smith have introduced a resolution in L.A. City Council calling on the state of California and the federal government to pass legislation that will reduce gun violence in the U.S. The announcement comes on the heels of three mass shootings occurring within a month's time. Chinatown in downtown LA got a makeover as a bulky items pickup and area cleanup took place thanks to Council Member Gil Sadio's office.
There's always going to be trash around, but if we help clean the community and more people join, it makes LA look nice.
E-scooters are seen everywhere, but many riders don't follow the rules and ride on sidewalks instead of the street. That's why Council Member Paul Carretts is promoting safe and responsible riding through bright yellow decals in his district, reminding riders that it's illegal to ride on sidewalks.
We want to get the word out that it's both illegal and dangerous, and the city is starting to enforce that regulation.
Last week, we introduced you to some special women who offer a platform for female filmmakers. Now we go behind the scenes to see what it takes to put together the Broad Humor Film Festival.
Like I wanted her, Michelle, to connect with at least one other character.
And you know I like the goofy, dark stuff.
This one is one of those ones that's more of a gentle.
So do you let it in because, or don't you, because it's not quite funny, funny, ha-ha? We are a festival that it's about giving women opportunities. It's a four-day event. We screen short films. We screen features, web series. We have a Screenwriters' Brunch. We also have a stage reading. That is basically Ocean's Eleven meets Top Gun for women.
I want to see that. Wait, I want to see the first pitch.
Yeah. All the broads are volunteers. You know, everybody spends the time because, A, it's a labor of love. Be half of us are filmmakers, so you know, we know what it's like to, you know, be on the outside looking in, you know, with great content.
We really have such a huge meter of comedy. Like when we first started, remember, it was just, it's like real broad humor, like slapstick, remember? And now look at it, it's this nuanced stuff about abortion.
I know, that one's about libraiders.
I know. Broad humor is important because it is still, after 14 years, the only comedy film festival in the world for women writer, women director, filmmakers. There's enough of those festivals that every one of those people that we're not watching are going to get into a festival. We need to keep focused on the women that are going to have a barrier to access to get their movies seen.
And it is definitely validating when a film festival accepts your short. As Michelle said, give them their first Film Festival laurel, and it's a bonus to meet them and program their film.
And I'm always blown away by the first time writer, when they hear their words spoken for the first time by professional actors. But this is, this is one of the things that makes my life richer, is to be able to give the hand to young and even seasoned and marinated women, they're trying to actually get their voices heard through this medium. That's the reason why I'm, I'm there to hear their voices and empower their voices.
I read everything from beginning to end. I watch everything from beginning to end. It's a huge commitment of time, and it's a real struggle to get to that four-day festival every day, every day weekend, because there's just a handful of us. But when you're in it, it's, it's an incredible feeling of, you know, gratitude, you know, giving in, receiving. People just, they're so happy that we are here for them, you know, and I'm happy to be here for them.
Are your kids ready for school? While a nonprofit called A Place Called Home is making sure low-income kids have all they need for a successful school year.
So today, we're doing our 19th Annual Backpack to School Event, and we are providing free backpacks and school supplies and other educational materials to over 1,800 youth in the community. Well, this event is actually one of the most popular events. In fact, the first family started lining up at 11:00 a.m. the day before, which is indicative of what the need that we have in this community. Yeah, we have several sponsors, but we also have donors that will do donation drives at their office or at their home.
Our charity is here to help donate items to needy kids. We're here at Backpack 2019, Backpack to School, and we're here just to help the community.
This is such a huge, huge thing for the community to help support the children as they go back to school, and A Place Called Home does a great job and has a lot of resources to help this community with school supplies, backpacks, and just get the kids on the right track and on the right foot for the beginning of the school year. It's also very special to make sure that we open our doors hard time, make a fun event so that the community members that stayed out there overnight have an enjoyable time, and they're comfortable as well.
Oh my gosh, amazing, little happy little faces, super excited when they get in here. A little bit overwhelmed because there's, there's a lot to get, but just very happy faces.
Not many parents have like the enough resources or like enough money to be able to buy their kids school supplies or provide them with new backpacks every year, so I think this is helping the kids in our community.
I think it's one less thing for the parent to worry about. It's a relief for them, a little breather, right? So maybe now they can get them something else that they may need, because now the school supplies are covered.
For more info on A Place Called Home, visit apch.org. It's a chance for community members, families, and neighbors to spend a night out with local police to boost relations and unite against crime. Here in LA, there were several events, including Union Station.
It's the day where the nation is set aside for the community to become more familiar and engage with their law enforcement and other public safety professionals.
It is an event that, it's the first Tuesday in August every year in cooperation LAPD and LASD and Long Beach PD, all three of us, and Metro Transit Policing are together telling people to come out on their doorsteps, come out and join us here at Union Station, let the bad guys know that the neighborhood's in charge.
Lots of times, the community will actually not have any contact with law enforcement unless it's in a negative tone. An officer's pulling you over for a citation, or you're calling them because there's some type of a dispute, or God forbid, something's happening where you're being assaulted or what have you. This is a better way to get to know your police officers, your sheriff's deputies, and your public safety professionals. Just as many of us grew up with the understanding that your police officers, your sheriff's deputies, and other public safety professionals were people that you trusted and that you ran to in the time of crisis, and unfortunately, things have happened to kind of tarnish that image a little bit, but with events like this, maybe we can bring that back.
This is really important. In today's times, we've got some bad things that are occurring, and we don't want to see that happening. If all the neighborhoods join together, if we all join together with law enforcement, with everybody work cooperatively, our country will be a much safer place.
I think it's amazing because it brings out a bunch of people from every single ethnicity and every single crowd, honestly. It's amazing because you see a lot of fun happening right now. There's children, there's elderly, and even millennials. We're all having a bunch of fun, enjoying all of this fun aspects. It's a great night.
National Night Out is an annual event that takes place in cities across the country. Movies, fresh air, and a summer picnic go hand in hand, especially at the eighth annual Silver Lake Picture Show movie series, and Anna Margos takes us there.
It's been eight summers of free outdoor movies and counting, and when you see one of these films, Al Fresco, there are some definite must-have items.
So most importantly, we brought popcorn. I love popcorn. I make it all the time, so.
And you got to have it for a movie, right?
Yes, of course. Yeah.
It's really nice. Bring the dogs. It's a fun, fun environment. Love it.
This is our neighborhood. This is our community. These are our people, so it's nice to see everybody kind of bonding over movies, isn't it?
The Silver Lake Picture Show Summer Movie Series has kept growing each year since it started in 2012, with between four to seven movies a summer.
We were a couple of filmmakers who had just finished two short films, and we were like, how do we get an audience to see this? In our first year, we used to build our screen out of lumber and canvas.
Took two and a half hours to build, two and a half hours to take down.
But nowadays, there's a 30-foot state-of-the-art screen. In tonight's film, the big Lebowski is about to strike. It's a fitting tribute for the last show of the Silver Lake season, as the bowling alley scenes were filmed right in the area at the former Hollywood Star Lanes.
Nobody calls me Lebowski. You got the wrong guy. I'm the Dude, man.
Not only do you get the big picture here, you get a smaller, artier one as well, because each film screened here is paired with a short film made by a local filmmaker.
It's a great mix, yeah. These are my kind of people.
And look at that, looks like someone special is making an appearance tonight. Is that who we think it is? I mean, if it looks like the Dude, dresses like the Dude, drinks like the Dude, is it?
And what are you drinking?
This is Nectar of the Gods, AKA a white Russian.
Another special drop-in visitor, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, who helps fund the event.
I'm a huge supporter. I am a cinema buff and, and an arts enthusiast and a supporter of the arts and culture, of course, and so we want to support events like this.
And here's another bit of community spirit. The Silver Lake Picture Show also honors a community group each year with a $1,000 donation. This year, it's Saint Ants, which helps low-income families. All in all, a feel-good kind of night.
Set up a chair, bring a picnic, bring your family, and you've got a free night of entertainment.
And by the way, each May before the start of the season, local filmmakers can submit their short films to get screened before the big film screens. Visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Celebrate Asian culture at a music and arts fest, Roaring Nights returns at the L.A. Zoo, and Little Tokyo pulls out all the stops for the Nisei Week Japanese Festival. All this and things to do. Eighty-eight Rising's Head in the Clouds Music and Arts Festival makes a return this summer on August 17th at Los Angeles State Historic Park. Returning for year two, the festival will be a day-long celebration of Asian youth culture and creativity, highlighting the best in music, food, art, and fashion from around the globe. Eighty-eight Rising's Head in the Clouds lands Saturday, August 17th at 3:00 p.m. For more information, visit eightyeightrising.com. Join the L.A. Zoo for Roaring Nights, an adults-only, multi-genre dance event. This summer party offers interactive art activities, live bands, pop-up zoo talks, and more. Enjoy a silent disco and an open-air lounge with food trucks on site. It's fun for the big kids at Roaring Nights at the Zoo, happening Friday, August 16th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. For details, visit travelzoo.com. The Gay Men's Choir of Los Angeles celebrates Stonewall at 50. This truly historic concert will feature over 500 singers, including members of the New York City's Gay Men's Chorus and 23 other choruses from around the country, in a performance to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. GMCLA 40 makes joyful noise at the Walt Disney Concert Hall Friday, August 16th. For tickets, visit gmcla.org. Celebrating 79 years, the Nisei Week Japanese Festival brings the streets of Little Tokyo alive with food, culture, arts, and entertainment. Come experience Japanese culture for two whole weekends packed full of free festivities. It's all happening at the 79th Nisei Week Japanese Festival, August 11th, 17th, and 18th, at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center. For more details, visit jaccc.org. Join the Special Needs Network for the 14th Annual Back-to-School Community Health and Resource Fair. Enjoy a fun-filled day for children with autism, special needs, and communities that serve them. You'll find resource vendors, health and mental health screenings, food, free backpacks, and school supplies. Festivities kick off at the Urban Magic Johnson Recreation Park. All are welcome at the Special Needs Network's Back-to-School Fair, Saturday, August 17th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit specialneedsnetwork.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Smith moves. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves. Buscaino seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 6 to August 23rd, 2019.
So ordered. Continue.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a card on this item.
Okay, let's hold that and move on to the next set of items.
Items two through seven are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Item seven special, Mr. President.
Thank you. Could we hold seven and prepare to vote on the remaining items? Please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
For the record, Mr. President, the ordinance for item number two is held over to August 23rd unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, so if we get to that number, just let me know, we'll.
Yes, sir.
Take care of it.
And that brings council to general public comment presentations, or items called special set.
Okay, sergeants, could you open the center aisle? If we could get Antonia Ramirez.
Yeah, that's like, how long ago would that be? Do the math, 55 years ago, 50.
Okay, Antonia? Come forward. You have Items One and General Public Comment. And this is multiple comment. We're going to start moving your time.
You can watch.
Come on. All right, you have one minute on Item One.
I'd like to start with my public comments. First of all, you know, we as Mexicans cannot talk about the niggers attacking us and robbing us.
Okay, you're, you're on Item One.
No, I said, I'm going to do public comments first. I don't have my agenda, because I'm moving along, because I got intimidated by the blacks here.
No, 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 you get to speak on Item One.
I'll do a public comments right now.
No, I said, I'm going to do public comments first. I don't have my agenda because I'm moving around because I got intimidated by the blacks here.
You get to speak on item one.
I'll do a public comments right now.
Go ahead.
You've already cut my time, man. This is what we talk about fairness. Niggers can get away with it, we can't. I'm a Mexican and I can't seem to get fairness from you. We want somebody who can educate and be fair to allow us to speak. We get tortured, terrorized by niggers at La Placita, at the Music Center, Grand Park, bathrooms one and four, and every time we speak out, we get thrown out, censored by your city attorney, Black, and you, Black. And every time we get these niggers coming attacking us and sitting behind us to intimidate and threaten us, we get thrown out, censored and banned. No, we want fairness. I am a Mexican, I don't get it back, I don't...
I'm not going to let you break the podium. Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you, thank you. Thanks, sergeants, have us take a seat. No, go take a seat. Take a seat, you're disrupting the meeting now and I'm so sorry that you're having a bad day. All right, that, I believe, ends multi-comment. No, you're disrupting, let's have her leave. Let's have Ms. Ramirez leave the council chambers. Okay, now, you are continuing to disrupt this meeting. You are continuing to disrupt this meeting. Okay, okay, Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, you're disrupting this meeting. Sergeants, help her find the door, she's having difficulty. She is continuing to disrupt this meeting. All right.
Mr. President, even as she's approaching the door, she continues to scream and shout in case the cameras can't...
You know, where is Mr. Kocorian? I'm going to ask Mr. Kocorian to, we have some new people that are here today, some young people that are here today, Mr. Kocorian, and as the de facto lawyer for this council, why don't you explain, why don't you explain to some of the folk that are here what just occurred?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. To be very clear, I am not that and will not be serving in that role, but I do know that we have a lot of visitors here who may be attending their first council meeting, maybe their first visit to Los Angeles City Hall. And we have here in Los Angeles and throughout the state of California, we have an opportunity for the public to come up and address their elected officials. And that opportunity is sometimes taken advantage of by people who say some very foul, vile, repulsive things that almost everyone in this room, almost every one of the people that we represent, of the 4 million people out there that we represent, would find repulsive. And I'm sorry to have to say that just about every single meeting, we have a handful of people who come to the microphone and take advantage of their constitutional rights in that way. And I know that it's highly offensive to many of you, certainly highly offensive to all of us, ties into the same kind of divisive, horrible, hateful rhetoric that we hear so much of in our country right now. And I, just on behalf of the entire council, I want to apologize to all of our guests for having to listen to that. It does come with the freedom that we have here in this country, that some people abuse it. So my apologies to all of you and on behalf of all of us, apologies to all of you, please know that they are not representative of most of the people who come and talk to us or most of the people that we represent, those 4 million people in this city, and there's usually three or four who come here and take advantage of that opportunity in that way. So hopefully the rest of the meeting will not be quite what you just heard.
But we can't promise that. Okay? Thank you so much, Mr. Kocorian. And today, members, is, today is National Tell a Joke Day. So, Mr. Corretz? Well, it, come on, Mr. Corretz. Why can't a, why can't a pony sing because he's a little horse? Come on, you got a joke? What did one council say to the other? The doc is taking us out tonight. Come on, Paul. Today is National Tell a Joke Day.
Well, I am the worst person. My father actually was a brilliant joke teller and knew thousands of jokes. I literally have a mental block.
Okay, Mr. Corretz.
On the radio...
Okay, who else is...
On the radio, we had a, we had a show where people were telling jokes, so I heard 100 of them, I can't remember a single one.
Why did the cookie go to the doctor? He was feeling crummy. Come on, guys. Mr. Buscaino.
All right, in preparation of back to school, why are math books so sad? Because they are full of problems.
All right, can anybody top that? The right, the right side, there's no representation from the right side of this council. Wait, no, Mr. Smith, just, let's get the camera, that's the best joke of the day. All right, everybody, so that we can... All right, let's start off with, let's start off with, I think we can vote on item one. So on item one, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate, tabulate the jo, the joke, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and, and we did close multi-comment, all right? So multi-comment is closed. That brings us to... Mr. Buscaino, since you're closer, oh, where did he? Could you, and we're going to go into the presentation portion, and I'll go first.
All right, this is the highlight for us on our Fridays. Mr. President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, even though today is National Tell a Joke Day, in this council, a tradition that we've had since 2005, is we've had Pet Adoption Friday. And I have before you just a lovely little, little young lady named Zelda. Zelda is one year old, she's a mixed terrier, has a wonderful temperament, she has all of her shots and she's ready to go home with you today. We in this council, since 2005, have a 100% adoption rate of all of our animals that we've brought before this council. So we definitely want to keep that 100% record intact. Zelda is just, oh, poor thing, she's a little nervous right now. You know, if you want to adopt a, a pet, please call 888-452-7381. If you're in the building right now or in these council chambers and you'd like to come in the back and get to meet Zelda, we're going to ask that she stay for a little while. But, you know, if you're looking for unconditional love, you definitely get it with one of the pets that we have at our animal shelter. So save a life, save, we do the best we can to try to get all of our dogs adopted. Sometimes that's unfortunate, but how could you say no to, to that little face? So this is Zelda, she's a little girl looking for a home, she's not going to get much bigger than this. We're going to keep her in the back for a while. I'm going to ask you, if you would, to kind of walk her around and let people look at her and make you tug at their heartstrings so that we can find Zelda a home today. So, Madam President and members, I want to thank you very much for your support and many of the members of this council have adopted their pets from our shelters. So let's, let's save a life and let's send Zelda home with the family. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, members.
All right, let's find a home for her, she's beautiful. Let's give her a round of applause and thank our animal services representatives as well. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Presentations, sir? Or would council like to go into the special meeting, sir?
Let's go to both Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Smith for our presentation.
I am proud to be joined today by several members of my established equestrian council of the 7th District as well as Dale Gibson, who is our appointee to the larger citywide equine council, and joined, of course, with my colleague, council member Greg Smith, to designate August for Equine Safety Month. And, you know, these are conversations that we don't often engage in. One of the unique parts of the northeast and northwest San Fernando Valley is that we have a very robust and active equestrian community. And it was after both the Latuna and the Creek fires that we had to convene and have some very strong conversations with animal services and all of our emergency personnel about how we would adapt to some of the emergency environments that ensue with helping to safely evacuate the horses and members of the equestrian communities from the hillsides. And so it is through the efforts and the diligence of many of the members that are here in the community that we have been able to come up with some very thoughtful outcomes as it relates to emergency evacuations, but more importantly, in our day-to-day lifestyles, making sure that the equestrian community is well represented when we have conversations around Vision Zero, when we have conversations about how to safely cross some of our major highways. Those are things that I have been leading very closely with members of my community in helping to make sure that those voices are represented also in these conversations. Upon taking office, there was one, in fact, a equine crossing that we created that, you know, so often we just talk about our pedestrian crossings and doing our continental crosswalks, but working with the Department of Transportation, we have equestrian, and Mr. Weezer would appreciate that as, as a horse rider as, as well. But we created a horse crossing in Silmar where it was accessible to press that crosswalk signal from atop of a horse. And so it's those types of innovations and collaborations that we have been successful in shepherding in my district since taking office two years ago, and it's because of the close-knit collaboration that we have with members of our community. So I'm proud to be joined today by members of my equine advisory council, which I want to recognize Gina Cruz and Nicole Chase, a couple of members unfortunately weren't able to make it with us this morning, as well as are some of my constituents and equine advocates, Dale Gibson, Eva Lund, Mary Kay Hughes, Mary Benson, and Larry Watts. I want to thank you for joining us this morning. If we can give them a round of applause, please, for being here. I know I got to make the trek from the San Fernando Valley every morning, but when they're here to do it, it's because it's an important conversation for us to have and reminding everyone that this is a voice that's important and should be reflected in the decisions and policymaking, decisions that we make as it relates to pedestrian transportation and all of these, all of the different policymaking that we do today. So with that, I'd like to invite my colleague for a short time longer, someone who has been a strong advocate in the 12th District as well with the, with the very extensive equine community that you have in the 12th District, my good friend, Councilman Greg Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's a pleasure to be here today for memories, this is probably my last presentation before this council, so it's a meaningful way to go out. You know, I was thinking just moments ago, as I was looking at Mr. Kocorian, he was reminding us that 250 years ago, just a few weeks ago, 250 years ago, our city was founded. And those people that came here came on horses. In the early days of our city, everybody owned a horse. Now everybody owns a horse, but about 200 of them under the hood of a car. This very different lifestyle has been pushed to the rim of our city, which encompasses primarily our two districts. And we are so proud of that because it is such an important lifestyle that we've preserved over the decades. And we've done so much over the time to work as a city to help them, one, in fighting zone cases that we're trying to incur upon their, their rights, their trails, the horsekeeping ability by building things that sometimes just didn't belong there. Secondly, I remember years ago talking about emergency operations, these folks here worked with us, and I see a former chief of our fire department sitting here, and us getting a lift for our fire helicopters to take injured horses and trapped horses out of tough situations and hillsides. It's working with the city that has done a lot to help them. And also, a number of years ago, we changed some of our policies that really impacted them and that we weren't doing a good job of working with our sanitation bureau to pick up horse droppings. And so we've now worked those details out and it was with the community that we were able to identify those problems and come together as a city to support them. But I have always enjoyed this lifestyle. It is very special to me. I remember when I was a young boy, I went to a summer camp and we, I was on a horse for like two weeks, was part of the summer camp experience. When I got elected and before that actually, I spent like 20 years riding with my Corral 54 friend, Steve Columbus, who is here representing the neighborhood council. We have very, have very vibrant community. We have a day of the horse every year to celebrate the lifestyle and to preserve and keep it forever as part of the city of Los Angeles because it was part of our founding days and our founding fathers. And so it was very important for us to keep that. And I thank Monica for bringing this today and for giving me an opportunity to say thank you to the horsekeeping community. It is a lifestyle we love and preserve and we will keep it forever no matter what it takes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg.
And again, and what I also want to mention, and, you know, one of the decisions that often, you know, we, we don't think about it, but it's the planning and land use decisions that have tremendous impacts on preserving that equestrian environment in the northeast and so, and in the northwest. And so we've been very diligent in working with the members of my equine council as well as on the advisory, the citywide advisory, to help identify those potential problems and we had them off at the pass. You know, I, you know, I used to ride ponies at Griffith Park when I was a kid growing up and I used, like probably many of us did, also used to do trail riding when I'd go to Yosemite and growing up as a kid. These are things that we don't often think about, having the opportunities to enjoy. We have one public trail, where we have a number of wonderful public trails in the northeast San Fernando Valley that I'm proud that I continue to help identify with my equine advisory, methods of connecting them very seamlessly so that people can enjoy that environment here in the city of Los Angeles. It's something that they don't often think about. With that, I would like to invite my very good friend, someone who has been on the equestrian advisory with me in the 7th District since I took office, and that is my good friend and Lakeview Terrace resident Gina Cruz.
All right, well, I wasn't warned that I was going to be speaking today, but I want to thank Monica for all the support she's given to the equestrian community. She has been with us from day one and everything we ask, she's there and supportive of us. We recently had an accident in Shadow Hills where a horse was killed by a driver who, and so we want to really emphasize the importance of safety for horses in our equestrian communities and make sure that people are aware that the horses are there and we intend to stay there and, like Monica said, keep our equine keeping rights in the area and, and really focus on educating the public for safety for our equestrians when they're on the roads and, like I said, maintaining our zoning. So thank you, Monica.
Owning a horse, just the lifestyle with this way this world is, it's fast, it's speeding up, it's a chance to kind of reconnect with yourself. If you have horses in your backyard, they're part of your family. I'd like to thank Councilman Smith for saving our trails, keeping them open, saving a key piece of land just below Stony Point, and so now it's a, to remain a ranch, a boarding facility. So, you know, I want to thank both these council members for supporting the horse community and I hope the city going forward recognizes the importance of our heritage. Thank you.
For the record, that was Steve Columbus from the Chast roof neighborhood council Equestrian Committee.
Thank you, colleagues. And with that, happy Equine Safety Month. You know, I want to, again, there are some areas, and I know Mr. Rue's district as well, he's got a robust trail system in the Griffith Park area as well. There's, there's, there's a lot of great equestrian communities that emanate throughout the city of Los Angeles and we want to make sure that we can harmoniously coexist with this community and making sure that we're creating a safe environment. So thank you all very much.
I don't think you're getting a microphone yet.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. We wanted to take a moment to take, do a quick introduction to some very outstanding young men who've just completed our referee training program for basketball. If they'll stand up, they're going to help referee games for our youth basketball programs in the 8th council district. They come from Washington High Schools and Community College, but they spend so much time preparing themselves to participate in this way in our community. We wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their service. So, thank you so much.
Well, welcome. Mr. Wezar, you have an introduction as well?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a quick introduction. I want to welcome to the council chambers the Nisei Week Foundation and our Nisei Week Court and Queen. Welcome. And a little background, they are, we are celebrating the 79th Annual Festival this year. Nisei Week originally started in 1934 as an economic and cultural revival of Little Tokyo. Today, Nisei Week helps connect the many diverse communities of Los Angeles, allowing us to commemorate the rich cultural heritage of our friends and neighbors. With the help of volunteers of all ages, visitors learn about the cultural and historical contributions of the Japanese-American community. So the Nisei Week Court is here. I want to introduce them. We have the princesses and queen, Kara Ito, Marika Gacho, Ariel Imamoto, Emily Ishida, Mia Lopez, Kyla Igawa, Julie Yoshinaga, and the Nisei Week Foundation president, former member of the Los Angeles Fire Department, David Yamahata. Welcome and congratulations to you all. And thank you for all you do to remind us of the many contributions that Japanese-Americans have made to this great country and to Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Welcome and thank you for being here. Mr. Buscaino, do you have a, are you ready with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Where's Josh? Get over here.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Help me welcome to the John Ferraro Chambers, your GEICO City Series champions, city champions, Los Angeles representing LA. Give them a round of applause, our baseball champions here. We value our school district, and every time here in council chambers, we celebrate academic achievements. Today, we are here to celebrate these young men who have represented the city with pride and honor. And these are baseball players that have come across all city lines, and they've played against each other, sitting in opposite dugouts throughout the baseball season this past year. But during this All-Star selection, they played under one name, and that was the city of Los Angeles. We are surrounded by true baseball champions. The GEICO City Series brought together the best public school All-Star baseball players from four cities across the country, Los Angeles, Chicago, New York, and Miami. And over the four days that they played at the University of Illinois in Chicago, Los Angeles' All-Star team relied on strong pitching, strong defense, timely hitting. They went undefeated, 4-0 in tournament play against all other All-Star teams from Chicago, New York, and Miami. And the final game, these players defeated Chicago 6-2 and took the GEICO City Series championship in front of a live national audience on ESPN. And in San Pedro and throughout my district, we were glued to the TV watching that final game. In fact, we're going to look at the winning moment if we can cue the video.
Up the middle Felix, the underhand to Duarte, and Los Angeles wins the first ever GEICO Baseball City Series championship. Four games, four wins in four days. A clean sweep for LA.
Oh, the fruits of victory. They got some coats. What a proud moment for our city and for these baseball players, young men again representing the city.
The celebration is on here at Curtis Granderson Stadium. Los Angeles wins the GEICO City Series title.
Again, coming from all parts of the city. All the lines are blurred here, right, Coach? And that was the beauty of allowing to have these players given this opportunity. So we're really proud of these young men, colleagues, and their coaches, not just because it's such a huge accomplishment to, to beat the best of the best high schoolers in the nation, but also because this team behind me is a true representation of the city of Los Angeles. I want to briefly list all the high schools represented citywide, colleagues, and they're all representing your districts as well. Banning High School, Narbon High School, San Pedro High, the Royball Learning Center, Cleveland High School, Maywood Center for Enriched Studies, Garfield High School, John Marshall High, Birmingham Charter School, Francis Poly, the Vaughn Learning Center, Silmar High, San Fernando High School, John, Ms. Martinez, thank you, John F. Kennedy High, and Granada Hills Charter. And we're just joined today by 10 of these amazing athletes, and I'll briefly introduce you. And as I say your name, please come forward to grab your recognition. Adrian Gonzalez, outfielder. Anthony Hoya, pitcher. Antonio Mesa, third base. David Felix, second base. Dominic Cervantes, the designated hitter. Eric Rivas, the first baseman. Gavino Rosales Espinoza, pitcher. Isaiah Velasco, catcher. Ivan Blanco, pitcher. And the shortstop that you saw on ESPN in that video, Josh Duarte. So many of these players on this team could not be here with us today. They're either getting, either in school already or getting ready for the upcoming school season. But let's also take a moment to acknowledge and recognize them by giving them a round of applause, all the other players who cannot join us here today. So while in Chicago at the championship, these athletes met recruiters and other key individuals who will help them keep on to the next big step to higher education and even receiving athletic scholarships for the first time in college. We hope for bright futures. We also want to recognize those lead sponsors for this series, GEICO and ESPN, for creating this championship game to expose high school athletes to great opportunities they might have otherwise missed. So it's, again, this was an opportunity to expose these best players representing the city and our high schools. Also want to introduce you our GEICO Series Los Angeles team head coach, Matt Maury. Coach Maury is based out of Birmingham Charter High School in Ms. Martinez's district, and they do, I think we're, they're going to come here for the, their third championship recognition here in city council. Pedro will beat you one, one year. And we're just, we're, we're working on it. But we, but it's on, it's on though. They have an incredible team. I actually watched a playoff game. I went to Pedro High and watched Coach Maury's team. They were just phenomenal. It was a great game. It was very close. But we really congratulate Birmingham High for taking the city championship here in LA for the third year in a row. He puts these athletes in a position to succeed. I want to have Coach Maury give him an opportunity to say a few words, Mr. President.
In fact, before we do that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez.
Uh huh.
Ms. Martinez?
I just wanted to congratulate Coach Matthew for being here and leading us to an All-Star championship. But I also heard that your MVP is a San Fernando High School student, Daniel Martinez. Are you here?
He's not here today.
He's not here? Oh, I was going to say, I think we're just saying cousins or something. But anyhow, I think he's a, he's going to be an incoming senior at San Fernando High School. So a big shout out to him. And I expect to see Matthew back here, leading us to our third championship at Birmingham. So thank you very much. Congratulations, all of you, Mr. Buscaino. Sorry to tell you, but we're going to beat you again.
Oh, boy. So, Coach Maury, say a few words.
Thank you very much for having us here today. And, you know, another, another pointing out for your young man from San Pedro right here, Josh Duarte, was actually number six on the highlight reel on ESPN for a play that he made diving on a, on a play up the middle. It was a fantastic play. He got a lot of great recognition for that. Well deserved. You know, this was, this is just something really spectacular for our young men who, you know, don't get the opportunities that a lot of other kids get to go out and be showcased and, and be seen by a lot of colleges. So, you know, you know, GEICO putting this together and, and it's just been a wonderful opportunity for these young men to be able to travel. We had kids that had never even been on a plane before. You know, we had three kids that had never even traveled on a plane. So, you know, to get these young men out of their element, to get them on a college campus, you know, was, was huge, was outstanding, you know, to be, to stay in the dorms and, and just get that experience and get that, that behind them is just wonderful. You know, I think as a city of Los Angeles, we have a lot to be proud of because these young men went out there and they represented not only their families, their schools, and, but the, but in the LA Unified School District, but the city of Los Angeles, they represented them well, not just on the field, but off the field. And that's where we take the most pride as it, as educators, as coaches, you know, Mike, the, the coaching staff, you know, that we have here, they, they were so, so proud of them because we stressed it going out there, that, you know, you're representing the, the city of Los Angeles, the LA Unified School District, and they did a great job. That was some of the best compliments we got from, you know, parents from other cities, from the other cities, coaches from the other cities, and, and the organizers of this tournament, that our kids were well respected, did an outstanding job, were very grateful for the opportunity to be there and conducted themselves in the best way possible. So I want to give them a big round of applause for that, too.
Thanks, Coach Matt. Let's hope that this championship trophy inspires the team down the street, the Dodgers, to bring back that championship. Coach Matt briefly mentioned those who were surrounding the coaching staff. I do want to recognize some other individuals, coaches, coordinators, and commissioners who are here with us today. Victoria's Lagos, a commissioner, assistant coach Angel Espidola, assistant coach Roberto Baptista, assistant coach Michael Ewart, and coordinator Abel Navar, and John Agiri, who's a commissioner who couldn't be with us today. And lastly, if I can, I'd like to invite one of our players who's here representing the team. Want to hear from him what was like to be on that winning team and also to be a part of the City, City Series championship. Help me welcome Anthony Hoya, pitcher, representing the entire team. Anthony.
Hi. And before I start, I want to say thank you for having us here. It was great honor playing with the guy, oh, representing the Los Angeles. And it was pretty fun playing with these guys. It was, pretty much was like Philly playing with my brothers because we all play for the sport we love and care about. It, it was fun playing. We fought well. We work hard. We can achieve a lot of things if you can't work hard for it. Yeah, it's really, it's fun playing with these guys, mostly in the dorms. But when we play on the team, it was more fun out there playing with these guys. Mostly when I was playing with these guys, I thought it'd be, we'd have a lot of competition, and we did. We fought for a lot of good wins. Again, it was crazy seeing this dude fly in the air and watching Hassan flying through the air like Superman. So it's just fun playing with these guys. I have a lot of love for them. There's nothing I could do for them. Thank you.
Anthony is a proud Banning pilot, and we, he was also, the coach reminded me, was the starting pitcher of that championship game. So Anthony, we appreciate you. We love you. So let's give a round, another round of applause for these baseball players here. You're going to do great things for us. I want to recognize John Larson, representing school board, president, Dr. Richard Vladivik's office. And with that, we thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, for the time and honoring these scholar athletes, and we wish them the best of luck as they enter school, the school year. And we have to remind them that academics first. If you don't have the academics, you will not be allowed to be on that field. So they're also surrounded by their family members who are here. They're supported by the community, the family, as well as their educators and administrators. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's give them one more round of applause.
All right, we'll go in the back now. Make sure you get all your belongings, okay? Including this.
Okay, let's grab a truck. it?
Item two is a paw report and ordinance.
Okay, let's first vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Martinez.
Councilmembers, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to the city council mayor-elect from Ensenada, Armando Ayala Robles. If you can please help me welcome and give him a big round of applause. The city of Los Angeles has been working to create a partnership with the city of Ensenada for the past couple of years. And not too long ago, the city was also arranged the donation of a solid waste vehicle to the city of Ensenada as part of our salvage inventory. So he wanted to come to the city of Los Angeles and thank our city council for approving that as well as getting to know us and working in partnership. I know he's, he's following some of our most progressive environmental policies here in the city of Los Angeles, which he hopes to replicate in the city of Ensenada. And I want us to give him a big welcome. Bienvenido, bienvenido alcalde a la ciudad de Los Angeles. Esperamos más colaboración con usted y una gran colaboración, pero también siguiendo los pasos de nuestras comunidades aquí en la ciudad de Los Angeles. Bienvenido a su ciudad y muchísimas gracias por estar aquí. Mr. Sehio, did you want to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you. I think it's just important that we continue to, as, as I experienced this past weekend in Oaxaca, that we continue to build bridges in the, in the time of those who, who asked for walls, that the presence here of the political leadership, the moral leadership, the cultural leadership of persons from Mexico is critical at this very moment so that our relations can stay intact. This is a very critical time period here for Mexicans and Mexican-Americans, people of Mexican heritage here in the southwest, here in Los Angeles, the city with the largest Mexicans outside of Mexico City. So it's critical that these relationships are fortified in every way, each and every day, in the academic arena, in the cultural arena, and of course, in the political relationships. This dark time period in our country will pass, and when it does, there'll be more fortified and stronger relationships between our dearest and closest neighbors to the south. So I'm happy to be here to join my colleague, Nuri, and to welcome the president-elect of Ensenada. Quiero así bienvenido. Todos aquí quiero decir gracias por su presencia y su liderazgo y quiero trabajar, continuar trabajando con usted siempre. continuar a trabajar con ustedes siempre como hermanos. Amigos, hermanos. Amigos, hermanos. Sí, colegas.
Muy buenos días. Saludo al presidente del Cabildo, Ajer Wesen. Buenos días y muchas gracias por la introducción a Nuri Martínez y Gil Cedillo. Es para nosotros un gusto y un placer estar aquí en el City Hall de Los Ángeles.
Good morning, President Herb Wesen. Thank you, Nuri Martínez and Councilmember Gil Cedillo, for the introduction this morning. It's a pleasure to be with you today.
Les comparto y les comento que es para nosotros muy importante estrechar, reafirmar los lazos de cooperación y amistad de California con Baja California, and especialmente con Ensenada, donde existen 16,000 migrantes de California que viven en nuestra ciudad.
It's important for us to open up the arms and relationships between our two cities. This is a relationship that we want to continue to strengthen, and it's a, currently, there's 16,000 US Southern California residents living in Ensenada, Mexico.
Para nosotros es un orgullo decir y compartir que Ensenada es el municipio más grande de México y de América Latina, 54,000 kilómetros cuadrados.
For us, it's a pleasure to say to you that Ensenada is one of the largest cities in Mexico, 54,000 square kilometers.
El primer puerto del Pacífico Mexicano, el tercero a nivel nacional después de Cozumel en el arribo de cruceros turísticos, 275 cruceros al año, con 650,000 turistas a bordo.
It is the first port in Mexico, and it is the second-largest cruise ship port in all of Mexico, with 650,000 cruise passengers arriving per year.
Contamos con más de 100 eventos turísticos al año, entre ellos, las carreras off-road, como Baja 1000, como Baja 500, y la carrera de Regata Newport, que une a Newport y Ensenada desde hace muchos años.
We have over 100 events per year, with the Baja 1000, also with the Ensenada Newport Boat Race, that has been around for many, many years. And we welcome you to join us for some of those events.
Es una ciudad donde la visión de la próxima administración es trabajar en la seguridad. Queremos pedirles a ustedes su cooperación, ya que hay mucho interés de empresarios estadounidenses en hacer inversiones en Ensenada, y es una ciudad que ha estado trabajando y seguirá trabajando mucho en la seguridad, especialmente en la protección a los turistas del sur de California.
It's a secure city, one that has lots of opportunities for investment and for tourism. We welcome you to join us. We have, security is one of the most important things for our city, and we're gonna work with the city of LA as well to join in making Ensenada even more secure. But we welcome you for tourism. It is something that we want to make sure that everyone can be there and be secure.
Y por último, para terminar mi intervención, quiero hacer una formal invitación a que este cabildo considere la propuesta de que Los Angeles sea integrada en el programa de ciudades hermanas y podamos firmar en esta administración que me va a tocar encabezar, el convenio de cooperación para el desarrollo económico, educativo, cultural, y en materia educativa entre Los Angeles y Ensenada.
We would like to make the offer to become a sister city with the city of Los Angeles. We think we have a lot of things in common, and we want to keep developing the business opportunities between the two cities and the tourism between the two cities. And we hope during his administration that that would be something that would come to fruition. So, we look forward to hopefully having a sister city relationship with the city of Los Angeles.
Y para cerrar mi intervención, quiero compartir con ustedes un saludo de nuestro gobernador electo de Baja California, Jaime Bonilla, a quien informé que he va a estar frente a este cabildo, y quien también manda el mensaje de que hay toda la voluntad de reafirmar los lazos de cooperación y amistad entre ambos estados de California y sur de California. Hacer la invitación a nuestra toma de protesta el próximo 30 de septiembre a las 10:30 de la mañana, donde este cabildo está cordialmente invitado a la toma de protesta de la nueva administración pública del municipio de Ensenada. Muchas gracias.
On behalf of the governor of Baja California, who is a close friend and knows that we're here, he brings cheers to the city of Los Angeles, hopes to come to visit you as well. And on behalf of, for his administration, he wants to invite all of the council members to his inauguration, which is on September 30th at 10:30 in the morning, with a 2:00 PM special VIP lunch for anyone who wants to join us, join him. And he would really, again, wants to make sure that there's a great relationship between the two cities.
Y que viva la amistad entre Ensenada y Los Angeles. Arriba de Los Angeles.
Anyway, welcome, Mr. Mayor. Okay, what I want is to announce that Zelda is still available. And if you're watching this on television, please give us a call or come down to City Hall. She, when she leaves this building, she wants to go home with you. She does not want to go back to the shelter. So, just look at that face. So, to the members that are watching this on television, please give us a call or come down to the council chambers. Let's find Zelda home.
Mitch?
You got my message?
Yeah, and it looks like we're missing two others anyway.
Okay.
Come here, baby. We'll just keep doing it the way we're doing it.
We're gonna go to general public comment. Ron Farley, Dale Steiber. Please come forward. Is it Astasta? Deborah McGee, Robbie Davis, please come forward. If I call your name, please come forward so everybody gets a chance to speak. Yes, sir, just come to the mic and identify yourself.
My name is Avon Farley, Afrikan Town Coalition. I'm here to talk about the development, the housing on Bryanhurst in the 8th District, and what's called transit-oriented, transit-oriented communities and pedestrian-oriented developments. So, we're trying, this development is going around on Bryanhurst, 33 units, five-story. It's between two houses, and it's invading people's privacy. It's something to do with the metros in our neighborhoods. So, they also have another thing happening in our neighborhood, too, called the Dorset Village. It's gonna take away a lot of people's, it's gonna kick a lot of people off. So, I'm for keeping the people here in our District 8.
Next speaker, please come identify yourself. Name, please.
Hi, I'm Dale Steiber, a resident of Park Mesa Heights and in Angelino, like everyone else. I am here in solidarity with the rest of my neighbors to discuss transit-oriented community development, and how it really, as we plan to do this, is not playing out the way we feel a community should be developed. With the rules and regulations that are allowing land developers to come in, we are actually not developing our environment the way we want it developed in our community. And I think this speaks for all of Los Angeles. But I have several people behind me that can actually direct what we're talking about when we're working with our councilmen in this regard about transit-oriented communities. And I am, in my final moment, to remind myself that earlier, someone mentioned that 250 years ago, we were founded. As a librarian and a cultural heritage person, I do want to remember that in the spirit of all of this, we are on native land.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name's Deborah McGee. My family's lived in the 8th District since 1965. My parents brought their home on Bryanhurst as a place to raise a family and build a community. To allow developers to now come in and build a five-story building in between single-family homes is a disservice to my parents' memory. And it really is a hardship on the seniors that live in that community, to bring in development that will take months to build, blocking streets, all of the construction. It really is a hardship for the seniors who have built their lives there and deserve to be in peace during their senior years, after working since 1965 to build that home.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Sean Davis. I am from the families of Park Mesa Heights. Basically, we're pushing and begging that you guys please put a halt on all of these developments that are going on, because they're doing it in the name of the homeless, which it truly doesn't represent. They're taking advantage of the JJJ, the HHH, SB 450, 54, and 330. They are building, they're taking advantage that they will not only have to build those buildings, but only rent to 10% of the people that are in need. So, in a case like the Bryanhurst, 33 units being built, only three is going to be associated to the people that are truly in need. The other thing is that they're also making it unaffordable for us to live in our community, going up from a rent of a bachelor from like 600 to 800, to like 2950 a month. That's somebody's monthly salary.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Chandra Mosley. I'm here on behalf of the Bryanhurst residents and surrounding area at 5748 South Bryanhurst. My concern is more specific as it relates to the proper studies that needs to be taken and for any kind of construction to take place in the area. There's no environmental report. The environmental report is very vague. It doesn't talk to specific hazards that we are aware of in the neighborhood, as well as the safety aspects, especially on Bryanhurst, because it's a narrow street. And of course, we have the parking issue where there's no provisions for parking. Therefore, the streets are gonna be even more congested for first responders or anyone trying to safely go up and down that street. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Dorothy Cox, and I am the person who is immediately impacted by this new development that is going up at 5748 Bryanhurst. While I agree with everything that the previous speakers have said, I want to just make you aware that this is an impact on our quality of life. And as the speaker previously said, we are seniors. We're not millennials. We are seniors. We have worked for many years to have our property and to have a quality of life that is satisfactory to all of us. Parking, traffic, crime, all of those things impact us. The development will impact upon my privacy. They're looking directly into my backyard. We can't have that. We can't have that. I'm aware that there is a homeless, there's a crisis of homelessness in our community. I'm not against that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself. Your name?
Yes, my name is Asata Umoja, and I'm with the Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment. One of my primary concerns has to do with the fact that we have a lot of developments coming into our area, and a lot of these developments, people don't even know anything about. And one of the things that we found out, one of the policies that we really need to address and have be looked at again, and that is that if you're in a transit-oriented community, you don't have to notify the people that are gonna be impacted by it, that you only have to post it on the internet. Now, that absolutely needs to be changed, because in our communities, we need to be a part of the planning process that impacts our community. We have so many developments going up and down Crenshaw Boulevard and through the Hyde Park in general, Park Mesa Heights in general, that people don't know anything about, that they don't have adequate input in terms of making sure that we have an economy for our community. I mean, if you're gonna build housing, you can't totally destroy the economic district.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm Robbie Davis. I'm a board member of Park Mesa Heights Council. However, I am not here representing the board. I'm here as a homeowner and also in support of the families of Park Mesa Heights. Our two major concerns, 5740 Bryanhurst, where because it was formerly zoned for a family business, an developer has been allowed to come in between two homes, put up a five-story edifice with 33 units. That is not fair. That is, that is what we voted against. That is what the city council voted against. SB 50 on April 16. Dorset Village being purchased by a billionaire who proposes to demolish 206 units of affordable housing. If we say we're concerned about housing the homeless, let us not create greater homelessness, certainly not in Hyde Park.
Thank you. Next, please identify. Mr. Spindler, your last warning, no more goat sounds.
My name's Carol Derby David, and I live in 90043. About nine years ago, my husband and I moved to the neighborhood because we really liked it, because it was a single-family homes and a nice, quiet, peaceful, and a lot of seniors in there, of which I am one also. And with this apartment building, you know, the parking, they took away our parking on Crenshaw, and putting in a 30-unit building, where are those people gonna park? There is none provided on property. We're told those people aren't gonna have cars. I hardly believe that in LA. It's just getting, the traffic has gotten horrendous on Crenshaw, on Slauson, and every side street in between. And I thank you for considering putting, let's really look at what we're trying to do here, not, this looks like a spaceship that they're putting between two buildings. And, you know, the lady next door that spoke, she deserves, she and her husband deserve to have a nice, peaceful life in their senior years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Kim Marie. I'm a stakeholder in Park Mesa Heights, also a board member. But I'm here to let you know about what we don't like about, what I personally don't like about this construction, is that it is changing the culture of our neighborhood. We are a single-family residential. You put this building, we're gonna have a bunch of apartment dwellers, which is fine. We have allocated areas for apartments, and there's areas where the apartments don't look like boxes and interrupt the quality of the life of the people in the surrounding area. Having this building, or more buildings like this constructed, is just gonna inundate our neighborhood with a bunch of traffic and people and things that we cannot afford as a community. The infrastructure is not, is not ready to support 33 units, not the lighting, not the streets, or anything. And I don't understand, how can you ask 30 people to move into an apartment and not own a car? Because that's the stipulation by which they're making this apartment, no parking.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sax, are you around? Please come forward. Anyone else signed up for general public comment? Mr. Spindler, anyone else? Please come get in line. Yes, Mr. Sax.
Yes, thank you very much. For the record, Arnold Sax, and I was actually gonna charter a boat, or actually a spaceship to look for your brain out in outer space, Mr. President, but that's a different story. This charter stuff really needs to be addressed. What happens with the city charter needs to be addressed. These people here are complaining. There's a bill in front of the Senate right now, the state legislation, to create a new CRA, tax zone situation, to build low-income housing. Uh-uh. You tell the city legislation to take that money and provide it to people who are having trouble paying their rents right now, so they can stay in low-income housing. Subsidize people that are paying rents right now because they can't afford it anymore. You need to start moving your assets around, and I mean assets, your asses are already up.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Next speaker, please identify yourself. Please come identify.
Yes, thank you. My name is Roy Goram, and I put this right at your head, sir. 2017, you said that you were gonna put 359 marijuana shops or three-hundred-and-seventy-nine marijuana shops. You need to look at the terrorism that they have caused on Crenshaw, on Weston, on Vermont, and then you talk about people being sick in other places. You have towed that whole area around because of the people that's coming in to buy that marijuana, and those are factory marijuana. So that means that there's going to be a lot of sick people behind us. And when we talk about immigrants, we need to start looking at some of them Canadians, the largest population of immigrants in the United States. That lady that was in there, she just don't know herself. But if y'all don't stop, you're going to suffer the same consequences that these neighborhoods are having now, because it doesn't stay in one place.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler.
Well, well said. Yes, so, eh 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 eh, what did we learn today? Marquisie has sold out the black community. That's what we've learned. You're a sellout. Now, you look real nice and pretty in that suit, and you look like you're a nice guy, but you're nothing but a younger version of Herb Wesson, another devil, another Satan worshiper. Yes, that's right. Yes, they all are a bunch of devils. Look at that over there, Curran Price. Look what he's done, yes. All sinners, they don't go to church, they don't recognize God, they believe in the mighty dollar, they worship the mighty dollar, they work for the Jews, the Ashkenazi Jews, yes. They're going to take all of our land and make us all homeless, right? No, wrong. We're going to take the FBI and ass-ramp them into the indictments. Thank you, FBI, God bless.
Thank you, thank you. And you come up here and talk about us with a goat, all right? Anyway, so with, with that said, that concludes general public comment. I now recognize Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to rise to thank all the residents of the Eighth District for pressing this issue for weeks and bringing it to, to the attention of the council. This case on Bryanhurst is exactly the reason we all opposed SB fifty. So on that street, which I've walked and driven at night and seen, between a whole street of single-story mostly, single-family housing, in between two houses, without any council approval, a developer has permission to build a six-story apartment building with thirty units with limited parking, on the idea that because someone signs a piece of paper and says they're not going to have a car, that they get to live there. And we know in L.A., that's just not a, a, a reality. And so what we find is, over the years, and, and Council President Wesson, you know this, and Council Member Price, you know this, over the years, the only people that would invest in our community are like the people that you see sitting out there. They're the only ones that would buy houses, they're the only ones that would spend money fixing up houses, they're, they're, you see people have beautiful gardens, they're the only ones that would invest. And now that the community is in a condition that other investors want it, the rules are such that those investors can come in and completely tear apart a neighborhood, can make it unlivable for the people who've lived there so many years. And so, we're putting forward two motions today that'll take the Crenshaw-specific plan and essentially put a freeze on any developments on commercial lots that abut residential lots, which is the loophole that this went into, and will instruct the Planning Department to come up with a transitional plan. So if you want to build high on the main street, we make sure that as you come up against the residential areas, that there is a transition in design and height and density and all the rest. And so, we put those forward, we thank the residents for bringing it, but like so many of us across the city, as the city grows, as L.A. becomes the number-one destination for people, we have to take a really hard look and make sure we preserve the neighborhoods that have been the backbone of this city and our community for so many years. So, thank you.
Well said. Well said, uh, well said, Mr. Harris Dawson, and I look forward to working with you as you move that forward. And we should also know that we're, we, we had a motion that was heard that would deal with some kind of notification, and we're meeting with the city attorney's office. I mean, I don't care really what the, the law states. I can't envision a reality where you can't at least notify the people that live in the area. And so we're, just so you know, that's being worked on as well. And thank, thank all of you for, so much for coming. And, and Mr. Spindler, the next time, why don't you call me and Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Price the N-word like you do? The only reason why you didn't do it today is because black people were here. All right, so now I'm going to move on to the next item. All right. Let's vote on seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's recess the regular, go into the special.
Bloomingville Bonin Buscayino, Sidio Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts Kokorian, Martinez Ofero, Price Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson, twelve members present in accord, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you. And what's before this body?
Item number eight is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Let me call up Mr. Sax. Mr. Sax and Mr. Spindler.
Yes, thank you again, for the record, Arnold Sax, and recommendations from the controller. So based on the last item you just had on your agenda regarding a six-story building that was put in a community without anybody authorizing it, does it really matter what the controller says? Does it really matter what any of you elected officials say? Because nobody knew about that project, and yet, boom, six stories later, it's in the, the develop, the neighborhood. So, the controller, who's in charge of funds supposedly, he should look into some of the funds that need to be taken out of dead accounts, per se, and be able to put them back into live accounts, so the city isn't always so poor. It's amazing how a city and a state that's number eight in the world is always crying that they have no money. Really.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
You know, for the record, I wasn't speaking the puppet, but thank you for, you know, toning some of the pre-
Oh, my pleasure, yes. We don't want to use the N-word on Fridays.
No, no, stay on the subject. You're not on subject. You are not on subject.
All right, all right.
Stay on the subject.
Okay. Now, we're talking about the Jews and their money financing through public money, a bunch of other Jews and housing for bonds, yes.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're on subject now. So, Mr. Spindler, it's the last time I'm going to tell you to stay on topic.
It's a Tefra hearing, eh 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 eh, so, Tefra is the Jewish way, and it's Hebrew, and Mr. Coretts can verify it, for fucking stealing.
Mr. President, you're still not on the agenda item.
You're, you're off topic. All right, shut his time. Okay, Mr. Mr. Spindler, please take a seat or you'll be removed. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And let's send this one forth with, is there any other business in the special?
Not on this one, uh, council.
Okay, let's adjourn and return to the regular. Okay, what is before us?
Uh, council has motions for a posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred, announcements, members, Ms. Rodriguez?
President, colleagues, I know many of us are starting to wind down the summer season, and many of us are hosting movie nights. Mr. Wesson, I saw your incredible movie night that you guys are hosting and have a lot of great giveaways. Last week, we had well over three-hundred-and-fifty people to screen Grease. I had some young girls dressed up as beauty school dropouts and multiple Sandys. But tonight, one of the things, and it was in honor of, of the Declaration of Equine Safety Month, that tonight, we are featuring Secretariat at the Hanson Dam Horse Park. And so, we have, we have a ride-in instead of a drive-in. We have horse-riding demonstrations. We, we've got a lot of activities for the kids, but, you know, one of the things that's really wonderful about my district is we've got a number of these very unique public spaces, and making sure that we can ignite them with community participation is really something that I focused on it during these movie nights. Next week, we are holding, we're screening The Incredibles Two movie, but our culminating movie is, again, going to take place at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where last year we premiered the screening of Jaws, much to the perhaps dislike of certain young children, but it was a phenomenal success with well over eight-hundred-and-fifty people participating and attending that movie where they got to screen, watch the screening of Jaws from the water. So, our concluding movie night on August thirtieth will again be at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where we are going to be screening Aquaman. So, I want to invite everybody to come on out again tonight at the Hanson Dam Horse Park. It's going to be a good time, ponies, horses, it's going to be a good time. So we hope everybody will come out and join us.
Sounds like fun. Uh, Mr. Buscayino?
You know, hands down, Monica, the most creative movie-in-the-park programming in the city of L.A.
No, no doubt about it, we should all do that. So we're going to bring thousands of people.
Horseback riding, secretariat, so, congrats. I think we should, Marquees, we're going to-
She had movies in the, in the pool, and the movie that she showed was Jaws.
That's crazy. Amazing, and great turnout too, Monica. No, I just, just an announcement, this morning I took part of Watts Walking Group, the first ever, and I want to recognize all those involved in this new initiative, the LAPD Community Safety Partnership, as well as the Watts Rising Collaborative. It's an urban peace institute-led, the walks aim to create a safe passage in the routes of Watts that are used for students going to school. They also are, are aimed to connect with community members, promote advocacy, identify some of the quality of life issues, and build up for the startup schools. So this morning, we had about sixty parents, kids, CBOs, so just want to thank the Watts community for leading that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Announcements, was it, Mr. Announcements, members, any other announcements? If all in the council chambers would please rise for adjourning motions, adjourning motions. I am looking to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members. I asked today that we adjourn in the memory of Ms. Gladys J. Moore, along, a strong and dedicated, longtime public servant to our city, and the mother of Ms. Chandra Moore, who was just with us, just spoke to us today about the Hyde Park neighborhood. Gladys moved to Los Angeles in nineteen forty-eight from Georgia and was hired by the Los Angeles Police Department in nineteen forty-nine as a clerk typist under Police Chief Willie, William A. Horton. In nineteen fifty, she married Thomas D. Mosley at the All Peoples Christian Church in the Ninth District, where she remained a loyal and dedicated member for sixty-five years. She was recognized upon her retirement by, from LAPD by the city, recognizing her leadership abilities, her intense attention to detail, and her pioneering work documenting preliminary investigative reports by Los Angeles Police Department. She was involved in her neighborhood watch and a pillar of the Crenshaw community and the neighborhoods along it, up to and including starting a vegetable garden. In nineteen eighty, she retired from LAPD under Chief Darryl Gates after thirty-one years of service to the city of Los Angeles. She was a strong and devoted community advocate. She is survived by Teresa and Gregory Mosley and her four grandchildren, Tracy Carr, Aaron Carr, Rashida Mosley, and Craig Mosley. She will be greatly missed, and her services will be next week, Monday. Excellent, so we thank her for her service. And I have a second one, Mr. President, another Eighth District resident and longtime public servant to the city of Los Angeles, Minor Coleman James. Mr. James started his career for the city of Los Angeles as a cement finisher for the Department of Recreation and Parks, and Parks in nineteen forty-seven. During his time, he received several promotions. In nineteen sixty-eight, he was promotion, promoted to the Methods and Standards Technician position, and was one of the pioneers who developed workload indicators, quantifying the amount of work each employee did during their time with the department. In nineteen seventy-four, he joined the Bureau of Street Services and managed various maintenance districts, eventually promoting to Street Maintenance Supervisor Number Two. During that time, he became a supervisor, he paved streets and installed sidewalks in our city for so many years. He also had small businesses and several other vocations. He spent thirty-seven years of his life working on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. He and Ms. Mosley are folks that have been pillars of our community that really inspire my work around targeted local hiring, making sure city jobs are available to residents, because it's those folks that have served the city on the one hand and helped build our, our neighborhoods on, on the other. And so, it is an honor for me to ask us to adjourn in his memory as well.
Well, well said, Mr. Harris Dawson. Any other adjournings to my left, to my, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, Mr. Harris Dawson, I'd be honored to sign on to Mrs. Mosley's adjournment. Members, I rise today in the memory of Jeremiah Diaz, who passed away much too soon. Jeremiah was a homeless outreach coordinator for Hopics in Spa Six and a dedicated partner in the fight against homelessness. Over the years, our office has worked closely with Jeremiah on a number of initiatives. He was kind, supportive, and worked diligently to build trust with his clients. Jeremiah was born on January seventeenth, nineteen sixty-nine. His sunset was on August the seventh, twenty nineteen. He was only fifty years old, yet in the last fifteen years, much of this time was spent giving back to the community. He's survived by his wife, wife Martha Diaz, and his sixteen-year-old daughter, a father, Vincent Diaz, stepmother Billy Diaz. He had two brothers, Nick and Matthew, two sisters, Denise and Connie. His services will be held next week, August the twenty-second, at the Risher Mortuary in Montebello. He'll be sorely missed. We'll always remember his work and his dedication to getting our most vulnerable citizens off the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Ms. Martinez?
I'd like to take the time to adjourn in the memory of our beloved community member, Jan Brown. Jan lived in the community of Panorama City and was really a true asset to our community. She passed away on July twenty-seventh from complications of pneumonia. She was born on February eighth, nineteen forty-seven, in San Fernando to Richard and Mural Lu, Mural Lewis. She attended Castle Heights Elementary School, Palms Middle School, and Hamilton High School. She loved riding and took courses at Santa Monica Community College and UCLA. She entered the working world to pursue her dream of becoming an advertising copyright. She achieved her dream by becoming a writer and a marketing professional. In two thousand and three, Jan was honored with two Public Relations Society of America Awards, one from the California Parks Peace Officers Association, and the other from the California Manufactured Housing Association. Both campaigns generated extensive media coverage for her clients. She was incredibly talented. Additionally, Jan served as a Communications Director and Board Member for the nonprofit's Wild Animal Rescue Facilities in Southern California. She also handled public relations for the pet orphans of Southern California for several years. Her love for animals was strongly reflected in her service. After her retirement in twenty, twenty oh five, Jan kept busy writing press materials for the Ontario Museum of History and Arts, as well as on various community projects in the community of Panorama City. She was truly dedicated to improving the neighborhood she called home. Among many contributions to Panorama City, Jan was instrumental in founding the Panorama City Neighborhood Council, where she remained strong advocate and a board member until her last days. Jan was also involved in spearheading our efforts on the neighborhood council to restore the Van Nuys Boulevard mural painted by the late Alfredo Diaz Flores, commemorating the fifty-year history of the nearby General Motors Plant. In addition, Jan carved a very deep passion for the panorama life- Motors Plant. In addition, Jan carved a very deep passion for the Panorama Library, where she dedicated countless hours volunteering. She served as the president of the Friends of the Panorama City Library, and oversaw the operations of its used book store at the branch, while recruiting many other volunteers to do the same, to make sure that the store remained open. The library staff loved her dedication and described Jan as one of theirs, their very own, and she was regarded as a family member to that library. There was even, um, I remember that when I was elected in twenty thirteen, the library had been, um, closed for several months because of some serious plumbing issues, and she would call me every single day to make sure I was on top of the plumbers, not knowing anything about plumbing, to make sure that the library was open, because that's how much she cared about the library, the people who lived there, and the kids that it served. Since then, Jan has tirelessly worked with our office to make sure that we are improving, um, in quality of life issues in the Panorama City area. She was present at every single cleanup, and was a true advocate to make sure that we advocated for resources for this community. She developed a strong relationship with the Department of Animal Services, and also enjoyed volunteering on, on their countless, um, community events. Jan will be sorely missed in the Panorama City community. She was loved. She was a real dedicated person, and her legacy will live on, and so many of us, and will continue to do her work. Her, the services for Jan's, um, passing are pending, but I want to ask our members to please keep her family, uh, in your thoughts, and may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, before I call on Mr. Krikorian, I just want to make sure that there are no more adjourning motions. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. Members, it's with great sadness that I asked that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of a great friend of many of us, Edith Perez, uh, former president of the Los Angeles Police Commission, a brilliant lawyer, prominent community leader, uh, and a mentor to, to many of us and many throughout our city. Uh, Edith passed away on July twentieth after a very long, very heroic, very strong, typical of Edith, strong battle, uh, with cancer. She was the daughter of migrant farm workers, and from that beginning, Edith became the first Latina partner of one of our nation's most important, most prominent law firms, Latham &amp; Watkins. Um, she became president of the Los Angeles Police Commission during a time of very tumultuous time, of great conflict and division within our city in the post-Rodney King era, when she had the responsibility of trying to bring this city together, bring its relationship with its police department together. Uh, it was a Herculean task at a time of, of great tension and, um, and difficulty in our city. Uh, Edith was born on August thirtieth, nineteen fifty-four, in Acambay, Me- Mexico, uh, a mountain town near Mexico City. Her family came to this country, uh, under the Bracero Program. And so from that, um, humble beginning, Edith started as, uh, as the daughter of migrant farm workers, and she rose to really the pinnacles of power and influence in this great city. She was raised in the Northern California rural town of Marysville, um, and, um, she said that she was poor, she was one of the have-nots, um, but it was that beginning that really inspired her to become a lawyer and become a community leader, so she could help other people who were have-nots. Edith, um, grew up, uh, studied hard, worked hard, uh, managed to make herself, uh, managed to build up her, um, her academics to the point that she was able to win a scholarship to UC Davis. Uh, she graduated Phi Beta Kappa with degrees in Spanish, Spanish literature and political science, um, and, uh, got a job as a deputy probation officer in Yuba County. She then went on to law school at, uh, one of our nation's premier law schools, UC Berkeley, uh, and there became the Associate Editor of the California Law Review, one of the most prestigious law firms, uh, law reviews in the country as well. Um, Edith met her husband Kurt, uh, Kurt Holgin, who's here with me today, who, when they were both students at Bolt Hall, uh, they met in nineteen seventy-eight and married two years later. In nineteen ninety-five, after this great extraordinary legal career, or in the midst of it, uh, Mayor Richard Reardon tapped Edith to become president of the Los Angeles Police Commission, uh, a, a task that was, um, you know, something that was, uh, probably like, Mr. President, when you appointed me to chair the Budget Committee. It was not something that people would seek, um, but it was a position of great importance at, at the time, and, and Edith, uh, gladly filled that position, and she was the perfect person for the job at, at that most difficult of times. She worked with the community, she worked with police officers, she went into neighborhoods, she went into police stations, and she tried to figure out a way to advance police, police reform, promote the cause of constitutional policing, while still respecting the, the, uh, difficult, uh, job that our police officers have in maintaining, uh, peace and, and law in our city. Um, while she was president of the commission, Edith continued her stellar legal career at Latham &amp; Watkins, where she had worked for twenty-five years. As I mentioned, she was the first Latina to become partner at that firm and was responsible for hundreds of finance, commercial real estate, corporate and international transactions, uh, for the firm's many Fortune Five Hundred clients before she retired in twenty eleven. Edith was very well respected in the legal community, as well as in government, for her strong work ethic, her extraordinary drive, her keen focus. She was known as a tough and dynamic problem solver, um, and although she had originally had the intention of starting off as a poverty lawyer, uh, her law professors advised her to go and try to build the, the most prestigious career she could, at the best firm she could find. That's the path that she pursued, and through that path, she was able to fulfill, uh, her objectives of helping others as well through her community leadership. Edith said to the Los Angeles Business, Business Journal in nineteen ninety-eight, "I guess I have a perennial optimistic view of accomplishing what I set out to do. If you look at the strikes against me, an immigrant, a girl, a minority, I didn't think about them as obstacles. I had no doubt they could be overcome." And in fact, by overcoming them, Edith was an inspiration to many more people who would go on to accomplish things, uh, despite obstacles that they perceived that they had faced because of her strength and her courage. Edith is survived by her husband Kurt, who's with me today, and her children Kate and Ryan, and, uh, her brothers Eric and Wilfred. Um, so I'd like, if, if I may, uh, Mr. President, as we adjourn in Edith's memory, I'd like, uh, her husband Kurt to have an opportunity to say a few words as well.
Please.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Krikorian. Um, our family gives thanks not only to this city council for adjourning in the memory of Edith Rose Bettis, but also to the city council of the nineteen nineties, who helped her so much in the police reform, which Mr. Krikorian described. Um, this was, um, these were the reforms that followed in the wake of the Rodney King beating and the subsequent LA riots. And these were also the reforms in which the commission had to thread the needle between imposing reform on the department, but yet showing they really, really cared about the line officers who risked their lives every day for us. So, our family thus wished, wishes to thank here today your, your colleagues and former council members of those years. Councilmember John Ferraro, who taught my wife how to consult with city council members prior to seeking police reforms or implementing them. Councilmember Richard Alatorre, who taught my wife how to seek community input and keep that input before her, prior to proposing or imposing, uh, police reforms. And finally, and very fondly, Councilmember Hal Burnson, who thanked my wife on her very last day as city coun, as, um, as president of the police commission. Thanked her here in this room by saying, you know, your fellow lawyers from Latham &amp; Watkins, come here, they're paid a lot to talk to us. But you come here, you're paid nothing, and you're here to help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kurt, and thank you for your service to our city, uh, as well, and our condolences are with you and your entire family. May Edith Perez rest in peace.
With that said, members, uh, this meeting is adjourned.